Hey man, get that thing out of the way. It's game time. Are you tired of being played by barber shops who just can't seem to get it right? Do you get tired of silly games your barber plays with something as serious as your haircut? Are you ready for a real cut? Well, come to Game Time Barber Shop. We're open seven days a week. No ride, no problem. We offer Uber haircuts. Located 2409 South Lumpkin Road, Columbus, Georgia. Call us at 762-821-2581. Like us on Facebook. Call today. Game Time Barber Shop, for the winning cut.
Yo what up, this is DJ Chip and you are watching New Way to Live Network.
That's something we're working on that is focusing on explicitly teaching the appropriate behaviors, specifically the under ages. The second thing is, we are hiring three districts of Virginia, Georgia, to apply for and receive a grant to work with, it's called Project Aware, specifically dealing with mental health. We are seeing increasingly severe behaviors, I shared it before, and they're mental health related. It is scary, some of the situations that we see coming, and this is from all demographic backgrounds. It's not just black, it's not just white, it's not just poverty. We are seeing an uptick in mental health, issue, mental health related issues. And Project Aware is in place not only to deal with the students, but also to provide support and resources that parents can access to try and deal with those challenges. That's not going to be a short-term fix. It's a long-term fix, and it's one that's going to require a lot of additional support and resources in the community, but it's a start.
See, I know y'all want to address the issues with the school system. And that's fine, and I know, like he said, it's about school, community, and home. Now, if this is about school, community, and home, if we gonna be real, blacks, whites, Mexicans, we cannot create this system together. It was a system created by whites, for whites, and it included children. So-called. Now, like Dr. Hood said, they're not teaching the proper education. You can cry a thousand times, and they still won't know. You have to understand that we have to take control of our community, our own. We don't own our communities. So you can say, "Black people are in this community, we occupy them." We don't own them. We don't operate the community, and we don't control it. It's hard, because the things that the parents keep saying is, "The kids do this, the kids do this." My parents never let me do anything, period. Because I had men in my life, black men. And if you get wrong with your black women, the black men gonna make sure you stay in check. Black men are in check. Black men are gay. Black men are dead. So where is that strong father figure, that can be a uncle, that keeps the kids in line? You are asking someone that enslaved you, beat you, robbed you, to take care of your kids? It doesn't make sense mentally. That's why the kids have a much better health. Mentally, they look at each other and say, "We black, we look different, we act different, we have a different place." And when you amongst your white counterparts, you are going by what they want, by how they live, by how they're educated. We have to produce the necessary things for our people. I'm sorry that you all think that this school system can be reformed. Every question is getting answered with research, but we got to do research. We can do our own research. See, you're not gonna get the answer you want, because it's not for you. It was never built for you. When can we build anything for us to survive in this situation that we're presented with?
Respect it, but I think that's a whole different form. I know, I'm just saying, I think the whole different form, and I think, at some point, we've had several forms in the community, and I'm just gonna be truthful. Some of us are just sorry, lazy, and we don't care about anything. And the point being is, we have expected our schools, and I'm firm believing, me personally, I think we ought to build our own schools, our own neighborhood, and educate our own children. But, and I'm not saying it won't ever happen, but it's not happening in Columbus, no chance of it. But my problem is, my problem is, we're sending out church school inspectors, teachers to be therapists, police officers, doctors, mamas, daddies, and that's not what the school is for. Part of the problem is, now, if we got a good little crowd here today, but had them giving away some free sneakers, some weed, some new perfume there, this room would be crowded at the door. So part of the problem is ourselves. And I simply feel like, even though we, you know, we saying what we want, sex is not gonna happen anytime soon, why can't the school system work with us to do a few things? So I had a few things here that I would like Dr. Hood to remember or write down. Because these are some suggestions that I would think we probably kept together. Okay, my suggestion is, some type of learning academy. I'm not talking about something for the smart kids like Thomas Tavares. I'm talking about something for these kids that avoided getting into school. You gotta have a mama, daddy been locked up. You gotta be in a house, somebody in the family been jumped on. Somebody got been on prayer. I'm talking about a school for them kids. Because sometimes you feel like, "Oh, there's a magnet school for children who are smart in math." There's a magnet school for this. There needs to be a separate academy. There's no reason why, just like, I guess, when you get 18, 19, or 20, you wouldn't want your 14-year-old ninth grader being in the class with a 20-year-old ninth grader? They're on a different level. A child who is in a school should not be in a school for a teacher to say, "Well, that guy's a gang, he did this, he did that." He's not even on that level. So he shouldn't even be in that school if he is a gang member and he's doing around that kind of stuff. But you know what? We got a learning academy for you. So my question is, Tillenhurst is sitting over that rock. I don't know what's going on with it. Why can't Tillenhurst, classing all these places around him, he put it some type of use for a learning academy for our children who are challenged? Okay, that's one issue.
Let me explain, before we forget, let me respond to God's nothing, if rest of what you're talking about is a matter of dollars. If we can make it work, we're gonna try and bring it introduced next year, but I'll have to wait and see if we can make it work.
Okay. A school that is something a little different, besides maybe curriculum planning includes money management. Some of the curriculum planning includes conflict resolution, interpersonal skills, interpersonal communication, some things like that, because those children need to learn those kind of things. The second thing, I was suggesting that maybe in the school, it's sad when you have to make people do things. A lot of these parents send their children to school because they're sapping out their kid. And I'm just telling you the truth, just to get them out of town. At some point, just like in order to give them food stamps, you have to go out and look, you have to show proof that you're doing something. Maybe at some point, they're gonna have to be made to do something. Maybe when school comes around and your child is the first year in ninth grade, you got to attend orientation if you want your child to come to school. But I bet you they don't show up, because they want the children to get out of the house today. You gotta be required to go to orientation, where you understand that this is a behavior thing going on in this. Because when you sit in the bookshelf, they're going in trash. It needs to be some type of orientation. When you go to child, you have orientation. Okay, some type, okay, some type of orientation. Maybe require community service. You want your child to go to this school on a regular basis without somebody, if you have these truancy officers coming out, you don't wanna have to go to court for not doing certain things. As a parent, you're required to do so many type of community service hours. Better be attending media, better be doing something. I guarantee you, if you make them come, they'll show up. Maybe constantly having a fatherhood program out in the school. Some of you been, y'all do have a fatherhood program? Fatherhood in the school, we heard. Well, I didn't know that, okay. And I think that was the only thing, require orientation, require community service. Because my understanding, there are some schools where parents are required to do orientation. I'm told that Northside parents are required to do orientation. Because I mean, the quality of education shouldn't be based on the physicality. But it is such that.
It is not anymore, I can tell you this. Let me just talk about, when you start talking about require, where's the hammer?
Come on.
Where's the hammer?
Hold that dog. If you make it, if you somehow want to get him, hold that dog. And volunteer to serve too.
Hello, everybody, this is Johnny Newsom with Financial Solution and Associates, and you're tuned into New Way to Live Network.
Okay, before you do that, I have some new people that have not said anything yet, and we have about 40 minutes, I'll let them get them in. Okay. This is Carol Gergie of Columbus Times, and then just gonna wait back here.
Yeah, I want to say just a few things. With the school system, talk about parental involvement, but there's a system where, if you want your child in a certain school, you sign her by a certain time. Well, my daughter went and signed up her children, all the schools filled the first day. Hello, how can that happen the first day? Would you want to sign this with your child for like the Wigg Academy or something like that? So there's something not right in that system. Number two, we talk about diversity, and I looked at a textbook that my children, all my children are in public schools here in Columbus. And for black history, this is how much is in black history. Now, you got a city here that's half-black, then you start to have something to address that. And we, I'm with the Columbus Times newspaper, I'm supposed to be retired, but I'm not. So if you send me out to the community, you know why. Everybody should buy it, and Columbus take it. Now, getting back to our history, then we need to have our history. I went to some of the schools, and you know, the principals said, "No, we don't want to do black history." Well, they do every other history, then why not have black history? And then the other thing is, you know, you talk about parental involvement, well, you have the law. And I went to the courts with my daughter. And the thing about it is, is that if you don't send your child to school, hello, you're gonna be arrested. Is it easy sense? And I've never heard some of the things happen in education in the north, where I came from, I was born in New York City, by the way, that I see here in Columbus, Georgia. But in the meantime, if the law is on the parents, then there has to be something from the school system to reach out, and this brochure, "Thank you, doctor." I've never seen this. I have never seen this. So you have got to get this information out in our hands. One way, hey, is to put it in our newspaper. Put it in all the different organizations that are here. It's got to get into their hands. It's not gonna happen when you send the child home and they don't have to pray again. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You know, it does, you know, I hate to say this, but I did, I moved to the Northside so that I can send my kids to different schools. And it does, it is a total change, it's totally different. Like, my two sons are in Aaronson now. It's totally different, totally different. I mean, now, like, you know, I get emails, and I always know what's going on. The vice principal and the principal, they work with my kids. He's like, "Okay, well, we're at the best, we're at the best school now." So maybe you should have some mentoring from one school to another school so that they can help them, because it's like night and day, total night and day.
And now that you turn that up before I move on to the next person, I just wanted to, we talked a lot about school problems, stuff like that. And now that you're talking about that, notice that you didn't touch on the title of one school and your concern about your child.
Yeah.
You want to talk about that right quick, and then I'm going to the next person.
I haven't, I started, I haven't got a resolution yet for the story I can do. I went into middling, I have a middling address, and I want to take my daughter to go to...
Blatton.
What's the school? It's on Littro. She's a bandie, so yeah, I'm going to middle school here. So she's supposed to go there. She can't go there because there's a cap in kindergarten. But then, now they want to bus her to a top one school. Now, my thing is this, I take too much money in my rent for her to go to a top one school. And I don't, you know, I don't think that's fair. Because I, that's why I moved into the neighborhood I moved into. So she wouldn't have to go to a top one school. But the Scotty County, right now, in St. Chad'sburg Matthews, which is a top one school.
Oh, Whiteman.
Oh, Whiteman, yeah, Whiteman, which is a top one school. And that's it, don't happen right now with the top one school district. Yes, I, I'm, I'm... No, I'm scared, I love...
Can you tell somebody something you like?
Oh, I love, I love, I love. I was raised by the school district. I love all my teachers coming up. I'm a great pride. If you get a program, it's wonderful. But I do, I'm still waiting for the answer. About you. Yeah, well, yeah, I'm involved, I'm involved in everything. I do, yeah.
Okay, guys, can you turn off your attention for one minute?
It's hard to give answers as parents.
I know that just keeps coming up, and I said I was gonna start, be like neutral in this right here, just be a facilitator, but I do keep hearing their responses that we're talking about parental involvement. Well, these are parents in here.
I'm involved, I'm involved.
Right, and then we want answers. That is the involvement. You can't get involved unless you know what to ask and who to ask, right?
Right, and that's not, that's no problem.
So this is kind of me bringing it up.
It's what I answer.
I just, I just keep hearing that. I keep hearing, I thought we talking about...
Okay, so let me just share with this. We, when I came here, I did very intention, is to break this district into three regions, and put region chiefs in charge of each one of them. There are 18 schools in each region. Within each region, there's north, midtown, and south. Okay, that was very intention. There's a region chief that receives the 18 schools within that specific region. If you're not getting served in the way you think, or if you're not getting a response the way you think you should, after, there's a very, very clear protocol. Don't call my office first, because you're gonna get shipped right back. Because, think about it, 32,000, call my office, I can't do it. That's why I have the region chiefs. Talk to the principal. If you don't get that resolved, talk to the region chief. I can assure you, in 24 hours, the region chief will respond to you. Now, they have to get resolved, but then they'll find out what the issue is. They'll research it. I have not had one person in my three years, not one, has called me back after they've been in touch with the region chief, not one. So that's what I'm saying. The region chief, the three chiefs are Ron, Dr. Ron Wiggins, Terry Baker, and James Wilson.
But what I'm trying to say here is that a lot of the parents, and I know this from yesterday, Dr. Hood and I were talking about this all the time, a lot of the parents don't know that they even go past the principal. They don't know anything about regional representation. They don't know. So it sounds easy, and you know, people all came and gone, or do your pockets and everything. So they need to know the steps to take, and know the law, and go with the case when it comes to the law. But we need to know if the school is involved.
That you've been told something that's different, and I'm the first one that you've been told something that's been called, "I called this person before I scored first high school." And I can't, I can't, I ain't got called that yet.
Okay, Ms. Quin, can we get, we got somebody else that wants to take something with them. Let's do that, please. But can you give her name?
I'm Toya Tucker. My son goes to Carver. I've been a teen advisor for the NLSU Youth Council. I will say this, as a child growing up in Columbus, Georgia, and I left in third grade, moved to Atlanta. In ninth grade, I was homeless. The teachers reached out to me. The counselor reached out to me. I go to Carver High School at least 10 times out of the month. And I've been asked if my son has a father who has PTSD, who walks the streets. I'm a veteran. I have issues too, from holding the M16. What do I do for my son? Besides, I get him assistance from a counselor outside. But if I come to the school and talk to the counselor and let the counselor know, he has two parents with PTSD, what do I do as a parent? Because as a child growing up in Atlanta, in the ninth grade, as you say, it takes a village. All my teachers knew me by name. And yeah, I had a lot of internal, you know, just goals that I would push myself, I worked. I was in ROTC. I was not gonna be, you know, on the streets forever. I joined the Air Force. I retired. I had something for myself. But it was because I had some great teachers who took me to the side and said, "Toya, you can make it. Come, even I know it's wrong, come stay with me. Come have Thanksgiving with me." Counselors that sat down with girls who was fighting every day. "Y'all come at this time, this come for five minutes, I need y'all, we need to talk to y'all." We don't do that. And I'm saying we don't do that, because I'm in the school, I've been in the school. I got another child, I will not put in public school, and I'm being honest with you. And my grandfather is a retired principal. And I won't put her, she goes to, she goes to a Christian school, because I know they care about her. At Carver, I don't feel they care about my son. He tells me all the time.
Peace and prosperity to you. I'm Dr. Jaleen Hood, the host and executive producer of Dr. Hood's Visions. You're watching New Way to Live Network.
Hello, my name is Lisa Ten. I would like for you to watch our show, The A-Girl Show, right here on New Way to Live Network.
Did you know that in today's society, your credit score is like a vital sign in the hospital? It's being monitored at all times. If not by you, certainly someone else is monitoring your credit. It can have various impacts over your life. It can impact your insurance premiums as well as your interest rates. You can be denied the ability to rent a home, purchase a car, get a credit card, or even more, you can be denied employment. Did you know that over the course of your lifetime, less than an excellent credit rating could cost you over $150,000? 20% of credit reports have errors on them, causing lower credit scores. But did you know this? The Fair Credit Reporting Act gives all Americans, including you, the right to dispute and/or investigate any item on their credit report. Inaccurate, erroneous, or obsolete items such as late payments, charge-offs, foreclosures, judgments, repossession, bankruptcies, tax liens, collections, short sales, medical bills, and many other items can be removed from your credit file or can be updated to reflect paid as agreed. Hey, you don't have a minute to waste. Call me today at 706-366-5520. Again, that's 706-366-5520. Let's get started increasing your credit score.
Hello, my name is Star Thomas, owner, operator here at North Lumpkin Beauty &amp; More, and today we'd like to welcome you. I would like to welcome you to Columbus, Georgia's first and only black-owned beauty supply shop and fashion clothing store. We're open from Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We carry virgin hair, Remy hair, and natural hair products with brands like Milky Way, Saga, JBS, and more. If you are looking for competitive pricing, boutique clothing, hair care products, and a beauty shop all under one roof, then stop in today. Mention this commercial to receive your 10% off.
North Lumpkin Beauty &amp; More, 3448 North Lumpkin Road, Columbus, Georgia. Call us today, 706-221-5243.
We can tell, I can tell you right now in kindergarten, the children who have been read and taught to versus those who haven't. And those who haven't have a heck of a time catching up. It's, and it's almost criminal, because those children are destined, not be destined to the school system, but because of their circumstances prior to getting to school that are predestined to rap the student's world.
All right, I have a positive story to tell. I, with the Lucy Alliance, I went to South Columbus Elementary School for eight weeks. And we read with 3K. And there was a miserable difference, because they had tested into the program, they had tested out the program. Also, while we were there during that eight-week period, there was a father and son reference in the school. So I challenge organizations in this community, get involved inside the school, become members. South Columbus also has military presence, you know, who adopted South Columbus, because it's right outside of Denver. And those soldiers are in there every morning, in the hall monitor, kids going through it from class, talking to kids. You know, and that's what they need. They need positive role models that they can see every day. Somebody to emulate. And the only way for us to do that, we have to get these organizations involved in these schools.
Okay, for Mr. Will, let us go. Kristen, I got this, okay, babe, don't worry about it.
I just dropped in because I'm a grandparent raising grandchildren. It's going to be massive years for the next seven years, if it's not already. I didn't raise my child that I thought I would be raising grandchildren at 54, with a deceased husband. But I had an issue to come about with the kindergarten. So I understand everyone speaking about the older kids, which have shorter time to go in this ever-evolving and changing school system. My simple problem was a shot record. That my child was unenrolled in school because he was being caught up on four years of shots. Now, this meeting was supposed to be on parent participation. I participated in taking my child to the doctor, starting the shots. But where we were failed in, the climate of fear that is prevalent with the principals and with the nurses at the school, and I do mean a climate of fear, because there was no reason for my grandson to be disenrolled from the school that he was feeding in three days. That was grossly neglect. So I was still, and I'm still kind of shaky over, because I'm still trying to understand how we plan on Muskogee County School District changing this climate of fear that is prevalent, as Tonsa spoke, because I have an older grandson that is now in the military and has served abroad, that came up under the tutelage of Carver High School with Dr. Lindsey, or Principal Lindsey, and had a horrible time. I'm just thankful he got out there with the same mind, because he was different, because he wasn't a gang offender, because he didn't wear his pants saggy. But he was in school with those that did, so they bullied him. I mean, bullied him. We went to a church that was able to give us some counseling, whereas we couldn't get any counseling from the school. We got four years ago the same thing that Tonsa is getting today. And that was four years ago when he graduated. Butt, is all I can say, because definitely not but Muskogee County School District. And here I am with a five-year-old grandson who had been disenrolled the Wednesday before Thanksgiving because he had one shot left on his record. Was he in danger of getting smallpox or some type of undiagnosed disease to his classmates at Ritten Road Elementary School? I don't think so. But he was unenrolled, nevertheless, for one shot, if you can look it up on the records. I did do my chain of commitment. I knew to do a chain of commitment. We're old military, so I thought, let's just chain command this to death. And I have yet to get a response. My grandson is now unenrolled and will be enrolling in Chatham County. My grandson is now unenrolled and will be enrolling in Chatham County. But that doesn't stop me from wanting this not to happen to any other children that are falling under the grandparent law of, I'm sorry, they got to catch up on four years of shots. They will not catch my child, and I don't think any other child on four years of shots in thirty days, not even in a year. We're talking about four years. So, the prevalence of fear from this school system passed me down to, I'm told, it was the principal's saying whether he stayed or went, along with the guidelines of how they do shots or whatever the case may be. But she was in fear, and I could hear the fear. I don't know if you guys exact punishment, but I think parent, teacher, parent, school system, parent involvement, and believe me, I'm very involved. It just failed, it failed me as, I got a mouth and I can speak for such a time as this. I can't imagine how many other grandparents are facing this. I can't even imagine of them trying to get shots caught up. Or a simple thing, as when we first got there, can you please control how people drop the kids off? You have control of everything else. I'm scared my grandson's gonna get hit in the drive-through. Those are simple parent involvements. And then you ask, Redden Road does not have a PTA. I have never heard of that in my life. I'm 54, and my kids were going to an elementary school that didn't have a PTA organization that we can address simple things for parent and teacher. And why didn't they have a PTA? It just failed. That was the answer to that. It just failed. I don't know if there are any other schools that don't have PTAs, but Redden Road does not have a PTA organization. Unheard of. So, when we meet in these type of meetings, I know everybody's got big issues and things going on, but if you hadn't even started at kindergarten level with parent participation in the school system, not failing a kindergartner in some way, shape, or form, we got bigger problems than we think.
Thank you so much. Anybody else, before I have to close the panel, please, anybody else got questions?
Hey, how everybody doing tonight? Hey, I've been working with Muskogee County School District since, I think, 2008, and I work as a substitute teacher. So, the beauty of that is I get to go to every single school. I go to all schools, and they put me, because I'm a black male, that was, I put me with worst classes, and I love it. But, I want to say, my kids go to Carver High School, and I fought to get them in Carver. It was hard. I'm thankful for that. But, I get to work with the kids every day, and I'm telling you something, the tests that the kids, these tests are like this. If we know that our kids are talented athletes, right? The tests indicate that this child can run 40 yards in such amount of time. That's what the test is. It doesn't tell how good he can shoot, or throw, or kick. It doesn't really show the talents of your kids, because some of you got astronauts and doctors in your family, but you don't recognize it, because the only thing you see is how fast he does the 40-yard dash. So, what I'm saying to you is, just continue, because these kids are creative. I mean, it's incredible. The education really doesn't even challenge them. They, you know, you give them work, and they're done with it quick, and then they're bored, and then they start fights. And that's how the fights go. They got, it's just, it's just, they got, it's more, and I say that because, you know, for my kids, what I do, and, look, let me just give you, like you said, to be real, my son was born in Germany, and he was raised in military, and he was a stickler type of guy. Now, I seen him the other day walking through the house, listening to the music he never listened to in his whole life, with his pants sagging, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna hit him in the head. But, I believe God, so I don't, I don't, I even accept that. I say, you know what, God, I believe in God. So, I, I give it to God, and I keep praying about it. But, I'm just saying, I'm telling you, we are not doomed, man. These kids are talented, they are smart, they are gifted. We just gotta find ways, I hang out with Dr. Hood a lot, and I don't know why he didn't mention it, but what he said was, ingeniously, he told me, he said, he said, what they gotta do again, is they gotta make, like, I remember when I was a kid, he said, some employment, you know what I'm talking about? And they don't have without some employment. Yeah, and then, and then, you know, like I said, like, like some of these, well, I think you just work with black businesses, they need to let some of these little kids work for them, you know, somehow, and give them some money, because drug dealers are doing it without hesitation. So, if we employ some of these kids to work with us, man, you'll be amazed. And you don't have to give a lot of money either, just, you know, but just keep them busy and let their minds be creative, help you with your business.
You, you was doing good, Mr. Lane, you said, you couldn't have stopped Hood. I know. Okay. I'm gonna let the panel, I'm gonna let you guys close. Everybody have to say anything, we ready to say anything. Anybody else have any questions? Oh. It's one question, Dr. Hood. I just wanted to ask you, so can I, so can I?
My name is Jamaya Bush, and I'm 15 years old. I've been on this dance team for two years, and I want to be a dance instructor, and I'm a captain for a girl's band.
Hi, my name is Felicia L. Hamilton, and you're watching New Way to Live TV.
And for bottom of the stand, I'm the one thing you would use to be a raiser, and I guess somebody is talking to those two. So, can you tell me, were, were all teachers using their raises? Because I know a lot of issues that all teachers who are leading, who are always because of the pay and things like that, so I guess that goes on with coming to the center. So, are they receiving their raises like these kids, and did they receive those raises as these kids, that 3% raise?
Okay, let me just say this, for the last time, I'm gonna say it, ever.
Ever.
Ever. Contrary to what people will say, I believe, and I can tell you, we received enough money to give a 1% raise after we covered y'all's stare because we've had for the last decade, okay? We took another percentage out of our local fund to give a 2% raise on our, now, some teachers got a 6% raise, depending on where they were with the adjustments and other things like that. We had also, so I can go into a lot of deep, but the bottom line is, they got every penny that we could squeeze out of this and still be financially free, and fashion sound. There were ten years of austerity cuts that people tend to forget, and there were differences that gave 3% raise because of one-time bonus. We gave a 2% raise, that means that goes toward their retirement. So, that, that's perpetuity. You give a raise, that lasts forever, and it's a gift, keeps on giving, okay? We have to count for that our budgets going forward, as opposed to 3% one-time bonus and some of it. Everybody did it different, but I'm just telling you, the bonuses don't go there, one-time bonus doesn't go there with your retirement. I'm just simply telling you, the board and I did what we thought was the prudent thing to do to keep us financially and financially sound.
So, we're gonna take there, all right? Can I, you can tell these people in the library here, I helped build this library thing right here, and I'm really proud of it, but let me tell you something, 8:00 o'clock coming in. Oh, yeah. I think he's like, oh, just, so, hello, everybody, okay? Heard it, Dr. Hood? And by the way, Mr. Lane, I think I was a lot.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I had really, I don't have any time for it. But this young lady right here, she stood up and she, she wanted some encouragement or whatever, I gave something for her son. So, when it, because when I look at this young man, I, I, I see him as a leader doing something great. I don't want to see now another young black man fail, dead, in jail, in a jail, what have you. So, when this panel closes, maybe there's something somebody can say to her about her son. You know, because I just looked at this young man, he probably said, "What's with you?" You know, but I see grace.
That's the head, hold it, if they already kicked you in the door of the bank, they got a lot of them. Okay, Mr. Lane, about Martha?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We're having a hygiene seminar on December the 8th here at the Library Area, we're taking donations, trying to provide the kids who use container eighteen with hygiene products to keep them clean, trying to do some type of walk with academics as a people so that we can try to keep our communities that being organized. All the programs that you all mentioned, the people's part of their dependence, we're willing to work with anyone and everyone that working towards having our women.
All right.
I want to say that I am proactive in the county school district when it comes to them. A lot of the time to go to the schools so that, yes, so that the, that our children can, and teachers can be aware of things that possibly are going on in our community. And then also, I want to say that as a parent, I am involved constantly, and I did keep searching and searching, and finally, there's a assistant principal at Perry Cole, Dr. Horn, that really took an interest in my younger son. So, and, and, and that's bringing, that, I mean, it touched my heart and it brought tears to my eyes, because sometimes when you just search and searching for someone to help, you know, and take an interest. So, there are people out there, and my, my suggestion to Muskogee County School District is also, like the Teacher of the Year, I saw with a, with a young black woman. You know, maybe they can mentor other teachers, black and white, but they can mentor other teachers so that they can learn how to take interest, not just teach our children.
Well, I want to thank the other panelists, appreciate you all and your insight, and sharing your perspective on how we, how we can do this evening. I'm gonna share this, I like that every line area you're writing. First, the issue I mean, you're the reason we work here. You are the reason we exist, okay? You and every other 31,009,902 people we have met, okay? I will be the first to tell you, we are not where we want to be. I said that a thousand times, I'll say it again and again and again, we are not where we want to be. But I'm gonna tell you what, we're a better system today than we were five, 10 years ago. We're facing more challenges than we've ever faced before, you as parents are. But I'm hoping that this, the fact that I'm here, I hope means something, that we're trying to be receptive, we're trying to listen, we're trying to get better. We're not there yet, but we're not where we used to be, but I hope with your help, the best for you to come. A school system, and I believe this, public schools, we are the only country in the world that I know of that professors have educated all. Black, white, Hispanic, disabled, whatever it might be, whatever challenges coming to the school, we have some really dedicated people. We have people who make the right decision every time now, but you know what, as a parent, you don't either.
Right.
You don't either. We don't make the right call, the right decision, because you know what, we are people-oriented business. I don't know about all these specific situations, but I can promise you this, anybody who's ever called my office, I've given them to someone who can help them, or I'll try and help them. I can't do it to everybody every day. But I promise you, we're trying to get better. That's the reason I came to Columbus, that's the reason I'm here, and that's why I go to work at 7:00 in the morning, and I work till 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, whatever it is, to get it done. I'll visit schools, I'll come to whatever, but just don't ask me and our teachers to do more than you're willing to do.
That's right. I thought I was in the military when it come to that. So, listen, I'm gonna thank the panel, I think they all did a great job. I did promise Dr. Hood that he wasn't going to jump on him, and he was no luck, like this guy did a really good job. But thank you guys for coming. Yeah, there's somebody I want to just say thank you for coming, because we're like Facebook friends. We talk, we talk on Facebook all the time, Mr. Olympic Dunn, back in the back, I think you didn't know I was back there, how you doing? Very good, very good.
I am a retired specialty health person for Muskogee County after 30 years.
Want to jump?
We do a lot of work, but I especially eat children, but we can't do it without the hands.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, we talk all the time, we're Facebook friends, we're group friends on Facebook. Uh, we have our secretary, uh, Dr. A.C. Pickens, Margaret Pickens, back in the back, she's mad because I'm missing her name, but she's back in the back, the hottest pickens. And Robert, how you doing? He's going back, very good. Uh, thank you guys for coming, we got five Mr. Claire out of here. We got y'all, we got them out here.
Hello, my name is Juan Lane, and thank you for tuning in to this station, New Way to Live. Listen, we can't do it without your help. We need you to send your donations in today. This is how this station operates, and we're trying to do the very best for you and your family with the production that we have. We are really giving it our all, but we cannot continue without your financial support. So, please, send your offers in to PO Box 3615, Columbus, Georgia, 3631903, in, in care of New Way to Live, and we'll make sure that we get it on so we can keep this great program going. If you and your family are enjoying it, we pray that you continue, we pray that you send us a, a offer that we can continue and, and do the very best for you. Also, make sure that you watch our public education program. This is a very special program, where it can help you prepare for your next test, the public education program, right here on New Way to Live. Thank you.
Did you know that the majority of people have no will, trust, or power of attorney? What will happen to your children, property, or other assets? If you can't make decisions for yourself, who will know your wishes? Will the appropriate people know where to find all of your personal and financial documentations and information? Well, we have a program developed by attorneys to complete at your own pace from the comfort of your home. You can update this program as needed with no add-ons or surprise fees. You can secure all of your important information in this virtual, password-protected, safety deposit box, with easy-to-use services and client support system available. Please, call me today at 706-366-5520. Again, call me today at 706-366-5520. I hope to hear from you soon.